You're ready.
Good evening. It's Monday, March 4th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board meeting is now in session. This is a one-agenda meeting, a public hearing on the MBTA Communities Bylaw. And Karina, do you want to bring us up to date?
Okay, so on the 28th of February, which is last Wednesday, we were able to provide the draft, actually, the warrant article for MBTA Communities to be included in the warrant for the Select Board to sign this evening, which will then go to the print with that version that we discussed on the 26th at our meeting. So this is the second public hearing. In the interim, in questions that arose from the prior Planning Board meeting, the public hearing, and from residents, there was a follow-up question as to the unit capacity for the train station area within a half-mile, and there was some, and Bowler will be able to explain this in more detail when they come up. So that caused us to have to do some reassessment with Bowler and determine some additional options for the train station area in order to meet the compliance model, for the compliance model to run. So, that being said, we've had input from other residents, some who may be attending this evening as well, can, you know, advocating for their properties to be included in the MBTA Communities. So we've been doing our best to discuss and meet and, you know, find out what their side, their, you know, what they're, why they're advocating for their property to be included. So it being kind of the nth hour, you know, this is a very expedited mandate for the state, and Southborough's been doing a lot to try and prepare for this, beginning from information sessions, forums, and mapping sessions, and then getting the grants. Yeah, and having this on the agenda since even before last fall, I think. And then finally moving into the public hearing phase, which we couldn't do until we had a bylaw that matched the intent of the mapping that we had done to date. So with that being said, there have to be some changes to the mapping in the train station area, which is within a half-mile, in order to meet the unit capacity of 150 units to be able to be built in the future by right, has to at least be available to meet that density. So that brings us to tonight. A lot of things happened in the last day or so, and Bowler's provided some information to hopefully help mitigate some of these lingering things that have to be tweaked. And that's about it. That puts us here tonight.
Thank you, Karina. So we had, this agenda item had originally been posted to discuss the bylaw because we were under the impression and given confirmation since January that the overlay districts that we had chosen would comply with 3A. So then, come to find out today that the most sensitive area, the one by the train station in an older neighborhood, a more dense, smaller lot area, which has many, many historic homes, is not in compliance. I think we'll have Bowler discuss in a moment what happened and where we were and how we move forward. But I think we should think about where we go from here first. The Select Board is due to sign the warrant tonight. Does the board still feel comfortable pushing forward to annual town meeting on March 23rd? Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Thank you, Mimi. Just a couple of thoughts on this as well. I know everybody has worked so hard to get us to where we're at today, and so much effort has gone into this. I worry that changing the map three weeks before town meeting is going to just create additional confusion that doesn't really need to happen. I think there's enough confusion already. And I also think if we go to town meeting and there's questions we can't answer, or it fails, it's going to be that much harder to bring it back in the fall. I've had a lot of conversations with people on the south side of town, you know, regarding this, and there is a lack of support based on confusion for this right now. So I worry, I would suggest to the board that we put this off to a fall town meeting, give us an opportunity to really do outreach. I know we've done a ton of outreach, but I know we're going to go to town meeting. It happens all the time, and there are going to be people that know nothing about this article. And it's so hard to try to explain in such a short time. Zoning is so tough and so hard anyway. So I would suggest we take this time and we continue to move forward, we continue with the hearings. But we also, Marty, I think your presentation was amazing. And I think if we put that out there now, I think it explains a lot of things as to why we're doing it. Maybe even create a QR code, plaster it all around town through the schools before school gets out. And hopefully, people will try to educate themselves a little bit about what we're trying to do. We can also continue the, you know, like I said, continue the public hearings. And, you know, if it happens to fail, if there happens to be a September town meeting, we can always try to come back in November if we have to. I think there's still the time to be able to do that, but that would be my recommendation, just something for the board to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brascio. Does anyone else have any comment? Ms. Houlihan?
So first and foremost, I want to actually thank Andrew Pfaff because I think he was the person who identified the challenges that we put pressure on Bowler to say, hey, are we actually in compliance? I think the reality is, and I think people listening to this town, this meeting, need to understand that the law requirements are that the MBTA Communities Act has 20% of the required acreage, which is 10 acres, as well as 20% of the required units, which would be 150 units. Currently, our capacity, or what our compliance model indicates, is 49. We actually do need to find 100 more units within a half-mile of the train district. I think this is an overwhelming task, and it's not something that we should rush. I think we should use these meetings and forums to be an education seminar, to be able to provide and solicit feedback, to talk to property owners as well as residents to learn more about their insights. And I would also recommend that we probably push off, withdraw the bylaw. If they're signing in, we should probably withdraw the bylaw for the town meeting, but actually have a conversation to see if we're at least allowed to present the MBT Communities Act to those participating at town meetings, so we can raise awareness. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I see Mr. Pfaff is in the attendees. Andrew, thank you. I echo what Marty said. The other day at Advisory, you really laid out clearly what I feel like we should have known before. So thank you for that, and I completely agree with my fellow board members who have spoken already that we will put this on a fall town meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Marriott?
I also agree. We're not ready to go to town meeting. I have two thoughts. One is I want to make sure that the information that we had given to the residents at the mapping session wasn't erroneous. And so I do think that we need to also time to, you know, have some educational forums, keep the hearings open, and make sure that we get it right. And the other is, I don't believe we need to wait for the fall. If we want to have, and we're ready, in May, for example, I think we could ask Select Board if we could have a special anytime, to be honest. And I think that we should do it before the fall because we might need the fall. If it doesn't pass, let's hope it does, and we get it straight. But I would suggest something like, if we're ready, May. We've had May's before, or June, whenever the time is right. So I would say we don't have to wait for the fall, but definitely we're not ready. I'm interested to hear what happened. I'm genuinely confused. I think about if I were sitting at town meeting in a couple of weeks, I would vote no because I don't have the confidence. Today, I can't even understand what happened. So I'm interested to hear.
Thank you. The one, and this can be a conversation for another day, but the one advantage of waiting to the fall is that we can ask HLC for the pre-approval compliance, which takes 90 days, which we wouldn't have if we needed to make. So should we take a vote on not presenting this at annual town meeting?
So, yeah, I just want to kind of talk through the correct language. I wish Town Council was here. But maybe, maybe you know, if we withdraw the article, is there a, is there a waiting, required waiting period before it can be brought back?
No.
Okay.
So hopefully, so I had texted Andrew Dennington earlier and said, this may happen. They're signing it today. I'll text you if it does happen. So hopefully, it can be withdrawn from the warrant, so it won't even be on the warrant.
Okay, so if it's, for now, the motion is to withdraw the MBTA Communities article from the March town meeting warrant?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the discussion is that if for some reason the warrant is printed with this in it, what are our next steps from there?
We would have to move to indefinitely postpone.
On town meeting floor?
Yeah, which is not ideal.
And we will take that up at the next public hearing on the 11th.
Monday, yep.
Thanks.
Any more discussion?
Just a question, Mimi. So once we take the vote, you're going to text Mark Purple and Andrew Dennington and let them know that if there's any...
Sorry. Yeah, Andrew asked me to text him and Kathy Cook.
Thank you. I was with Mark Purple before leaving the office today to give him an update, so that he was aware. I told him I spoke with Andrew Dennington as well, who was up in the hearing room prepping for this evening's meeting. And then I went down to Mark's office and explained to him as well, and the likely scenario.
Are we all set? No more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stern, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Okay, very good. And now I will turn it over to Zach.
Great. Thank you, Mimi, and members of the board. And want to thank, or start out by thanking both Karina and Colleen, you know, members of the town for all their efforts over the last year, all of the Planning Board members for all of your volunteered hours' efforts. I know this MBTA Communities process is taxing on everyone. It takes a lot of effort, a lot of volunteered time. So I want to start out by thanking you all for your efforts to date. It's been a long time, you know, to get to this point. We've been working with the town now about a year, a year. I think we started around this time in 2023. So it's been a long time coming. Really quick, I want to introduce myself, Zach Richards. I'm a senior project manager at Bowler, or site civil and permitting firm, and land planning, master planning firm out of the Boston-Southborough area. And with me tonight is Angela Bado, who's a senior design engineer on my team. And then there are some others working behind the scenes on our team to support the town as, again, technical assistance to navigate this new law and associated requirements. Again, it's been a lot of iterations working with the board and the town. So I thank you guys again for bearing with us and putting in all the effort that it took to get where we are today, especially over the last couple of months, right, since the fall. It's been very fast-paced. We've gotten a lot of feedback, great feedback from the town, from the public. I know there's been a lot of working sessions that Karina alluded to, and looking for a lot of feedback from everyone that's been, you know, incorporated in a couple of different iterations. And we've been racing, you know, very quickly to get to this spring town meeting. I don't think that was a mistake to move quickly. I think some of the questions that have arisen recently are great questions and great feedback, as many of you alluded to, and we've got to do this right, right? And we've got to make sure we get this right when we do it. So I do think to slow this down a little bit is a wise decision. As I alluded to, very fast-paced over the last few months. I think we've had to try to keep up. We've been going quick. We've been able to slow down a little bit this last week. There have been some things identified, and there was a misinterpretation of the model that we reviewed with the state as it relates to Area 1, which is the area identified near the station, so the station area. We've looked at that closely with the state over the last week and confirmed the state's stance. And we're going to outline shortly some potential modifications that the town can explore relative to that identified area number one that would bring it into compliance. So we'll get into that shortly. I think otherwise, the three areas, as previously described and outlined on previous hearings, can be generally maintained. So I think we've made a lot of progress that we can build upon in the coming months. I will point out some great points made tonight is that in our fast race to get to a spring town meeting, which, again, I think we see a lot of towns making right now. Everyone wants two shots at this, right? No one wants to be getting to the final hour and being concerned that they haven't given enough time or allowed enough, you know, feedback, community engagement to get to hopefully a positive outcome here and stay compliant decision. I think, again, it was in our best interest as a town and working with Bowler to try to get to a spring town meeting here. I do acknowledge that was, that was a, you know, a lofty goal. And there is the pre-approval process that we've seen a lot of other towns take advantage of, where they've been able to submit to the state in advance of town meeting their proposed compliance path, and been able to get a determination in advance of a vote or a town meeting warrant that they would be, stay compliant. I think, you know, we've got some time, and that the goal would be to take that path, hopefully, this spring into the summer, and be able to provide something to the state that we could get a determination on in advance of a fall meeting. Or as others alluded to, maybe it's earlier than that, right? To give, still provide a two-opportunity, or multiple opportunities to get to a vote here. I will shed some light that, or add some clarity that there have been some recent determinations from the state for other municipalities that have shed some additional light on some of the nuances and interpretations that we've also been reviewing closely, and some of those have been shared with us over the last month, and have helped to, you know, clarify some of the, I guess, the nuances of the regulations, if that makes sense. Some of other municipalities have submitted, and the determinations have come back substantially different from what was submitted. So I think that's all to outline that it's a little, it's been a little bit of a learning curve, right? Some of these regulations and that approval, pre-approval process or determination process with the state, it is valuable, right? And it helps clarify the compliance model and the road to compliance for municipalities. So with that, I know that's a lot of, you know, overview, if you will. I'd like to turn it over to Angela Bado from my team. She's going to share with us a couple paths that we've quickly reviewed since last week's meeting, some opportunities and adjustments that would get us to compliance. I guess it seems, before we jump into some of our options here and what we've reviewed, love to turn it back over to the board in case they have some questions.
I see that there are some questions. Mr. Marriott, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, thanks, Zach. You're speaking in really general terms, and I hate to ask you, but I really need you to break it down because I am not certain why we're not in compliance. So I didn't really get a good explanation. I understand that the state is still working some things out. Kind of interested to know what that is, but it's maybe a little besides the point. But how, what exactly happened for Southborough?
Sure. So in the model, there, the model itself displays some results, and there's a summary table, if you will, that outlines the requirements and then the results. In this case, that depicted some of these requirements as it relates to the station area is 20%. The results were depicted also in a percentage, which in this case were 50%, 100%. You know, you get the idea. In reality, those percentages were, needed to be 100% when it was construed that it was a 20% result. Again, that might not, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on the nuances, but there were some complicated summary results that were misinterpreted as part of the model that, when further evaluated, proved to be, I guess, depicted a little unclearly, if you will. That combined with us trying to, you know, move at a very fast pace, led us to further review this with the state and determine that there are some adjustments that need to be made to get us in compliance within that station area. And again, this might become a little more clearly when we outline some of the options that we reviewed and adjustments that need to be made to the area, which we were about to get into. So happy to answer other questions in advance. I think when we outline some of the options and adjustments that are needed, there might be some clarity to what needs to be done in moving forward here.
Okay. I think there's still some questions, though. Ms. Houlihan?
Thank you. So it's very difficult to sit in this meeting today, to be very frank with you, when we have an attorney general who's very harsh about implications to a model that was never actually QC'd. This would never happened in a business profit sector. It's a little disconcerting. I'm speaking as myself, Marty Houlihan, not as a planning board member. We've all invested time, resource, incredible amounts of effort to be able to achieve these. And I think it's extraordinarily disheartening that this effort has not been QC'd. And I think this is unfortunately something that our town is also seeing real time. So why I would recommend, Mimi, that we don't look at Bowler's recommendations? I think we need to have a very strong opinion from a planning board perspective. 150 units within our train station in a historic section is not okay. I just don't think it's viable for our town or our community. And I think that we need to have a higher-level discussion with the state to be able to have an understanding of what we can do to mitigate their requirements, which I think are unreasonable for our town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Marty. Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Marty, very, very well said. Thank you for that. I'm just going to piggyback on that a little bit. I don't know at this point, where there was a model issue and a summary issue, why we can't ask the state, seeing it was their mistake and all the time we've put in for at least a three, if not a six-month extension. To me, that seems like the right thing to do to address some of the things that Marty said, but also it's putting us behind the eight ball to try and even get something done for the fall. So based on their mistake, I think it would behoove us, at the very least, to ask for an extension. So if we're going to do this, we can do it right. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
Zach, it seems to me that Mr. Marriott asked you, you know, for some specifics. With all due respect, it came across to me as just more generalities. And I really need to understand really specifically what happened between mid-February and now. Because we were, our department was working with you to run the compliance model. And I just don't, it's not clear to me what happened between February 16th and today that changed from your perspective.
Sure. I mean, I'll try to elaborate a bit. Again, you know, we reviewed this with the state. I want to clarify that the state did not make a mistake here. And again, I think this was a misinterpretation. Everyone's learning this new regulation, this new law, and the compliance model. And we're doing the best we can to move forward very quickly, mind you, with the town to try to get to a path to compliance. And, you know, we've worked with the state very quickly to identify some of the challenges in our way here. In this case, the regulation had always been for 150 units within the station area. The regulations are very clear. The model itself and the results can be a little bit confusing at times. And couple that with trying to move very quickly to explore a lot of different areas in a short amount of time for a race to the finish led to a couple gaps here in the model that we've identified since and need to be revisited, revised, in order to achieve compliance.
Well, can you be specific, please?
Sure. So we identified an area within the station area, right, within a half-a-mile distance to the Southborough Station that we'd like to target, right? We plugged in the parameters. There's a lot of dimensional regulations. In this case, we were trying to model Residence B and those dimensional regulations. And those dimensional regulations. When you plug those into the model. Those help calculate your unit output. In this case, we had identified over ten acres, which achieves. That twenty percent minimum for area within a half a mile of your station. Again, the model has a table that depicts the results. For both the the twenty percent. Station area and the twenty percent unit requirement, which. Both needs to be twenty percent of the required area. And twenty percent of the required unit count. In this case, the 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 model depicts those as a percentage. That percentage needs to be a hundred percent. In order to achieve compliance. Not twenty percent, which was part of the misinterpretation here. So the model did. Depicted as a forty nine percent. Result, in fact, that needed to be a hundred percent. That was interpreted as over the twenty percent requirement. But in reality, we're looking about seventy five units within that station area, and again, as as other members. Have previously relayed. What the state requirement is about a hundred and fifty. Units within the station area, hopefully that provides a little more clarity. Again, we're looking to take our best step forward here, we realize been moving fast and there's been. A little bit of a a speed bump here, if you will, but I think there's a very. Clear path to compliance, there's a number of options here. And, you know, we're excited at the opportunity to work with the town over the, you know, the next year. Or or or, I guess, nine months, if you will. To to outline a path to compliance and hopefully get the town. Compliant with with the regulations and the law.
So along the lines of what Ms. Hulahan was saying, I I think what we're gonna need. From you as our vendor is. It's a a presentation on your on this model, we can't have this happen again.
Understood.
So we're gonna need you to scrub this. And present. And with a hundred percent definition. How this thing works, so we. No more of these misinterpretations, please.
I can understand your frustration, Jesse, and and all members of the board and the community. Again, everyone's been under a tight deadline here, we've been racing, racing to this finish line. And we've been compressing and compressing. Our 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 timeline and timeframe. To try to get to a spring vote, I think we're seeing. The negatives of of almost bending. You know what I mean, and. Until we almost broke to try to. Keep up with with some of these deadlines to try to get in the spring meeting. You know. Looking back, we probably should have said we're we're out of time, right? Instead, we tried to work quickly on a on a way too condensed timeframe. Where we we did not receive feedback when we had hoped to. And again, not. Pointing fingers at all, I thank everyone, I can't thank everyone enough for all their efforts on this, and I know. That you all feel frustration here. Being where we landed here. Again, I think the preapproval. Process here, Jesse, to your point. We scrubbed this thing, we've got the time, right, we were trying to get to a vote to give you guys. An outlet of a fall meeting. We 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 tried to work in a timeframe that was unreasonable, to be fair. And got too compressed, and now I think we need to scrub this, we need to. Get this right, which I think we can, and I have the confidence with this group that we can get there. And then we go through the state. And we have it, we have a determination made by the state. In advance of fall meeting, so that you have that. Confidence that what we have works and meets all of the regulations and requirements. And we go to the fall meeting. With that confidence, which is the path that a lot of others, you know, have created the time for.
So have you worked on with the state, Zach? Through this process? Because you had said that there was a misinterpretation of the model. Which you had reviewed with the state. Did you review the model with the state prior to the question being raised?
By with the state, I should. I mean, clarify that's that's with the state funding agencies that we're working with. It's it's again, it's it's still pretty fresh, so we provided some feedback. You know, hoping others can avoid similar misinterpretations. We've outlined those and suggested some. You know, potential modifications for consideration on the model, I don't know that. You know, I think it's more educational and I and I think. It goes hand in hand with some of the determinations that we've seen, that clearly there is some. You know, th- this is a new process, it's a new law, it's a new model. There's some some growing pains here and 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 some learning pains. And I think we've identified some of those, unfortunately. Working with, you know, with this town, I mean. I'll be honest, you know, I think. These can be. Very beneficial to other communities moving forward and and we've shared and expressed those. We have not yet engaged directly with HLC. On that state level on these, we've we've passed those along. To the agencies we're working directly with, and I think that's being passed on at a state level.
So what agencies are you working with?
So we're we're hired directly with Mass Housing Partnership, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, MHP. So they they are part of the source for the technical assistance program.
So these warp speed deadlines are state deadlines.
Sorry, say it again?
These warp speed deadlines are those. By the state.
The state deadline, yeah, and again, it wasn't this 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 spring meeting, that's the end of year for your community, it's. December twenty twenty five. Those are the state deadlines.
But one would think the state would have given. Time for communities to comply, so these kinks could be worked out instead of these warp speed. Deadlines that we're finding out all these problems as we go along without enough time to. You know, recalibrate and still meet the deadlines.
That's correct, I mean, again, we've been engaged for for a year. With with the town. So it's very challenging, I will say, to. To balance getting a lot of community feedback. And doing the modeling, right, and making sure. Everyone feels good about all the areas you've reviewed that you've. You know, that you've reviewed the proper number of it, you know, areas and potential alternatives. That's a balance everyone's fighting with. It's all about finding that sweet spot between. You know, working sessions, meetings, public hearings. It's a challenge, I understand that, right? But to to give the state a little bit of credit, we've had a, we've, this is a a year in, right? And a little bit of that. Crunch at the end was, you know, a little bit of community feedback involvement. You know. Adjustments to the areas that that came in crunch time. And again, hats off to the town, to the planning board, I think you guys are all doing everything you can here, everyone's doing the best they can. So I don't want to make it seem like. We've been put in a crunch time bowler ourselves, right, it's it's the the challenge that everyone's facing. Is how that all comes together and how that fits into. The two year timeframe that the state essentially allotted us, you know, back a a year plus ago, right? So we're a year coming, I think you, what I've seen from the town, you have made a tremendous progress to date, I can't understand that. And I think we are really close here, you're really close to compliance. Yes, we've had a speed bump here on some of them, you know, the interpretation of the model. I really do not want to detract from all the progress that the towns made. And a pretty. I think very great path forward here. With some tweaks that can lead to a a very successful outcome to the town. Hopefully, you know, by fall meeting, so. Again, you need to kind of take all of those things into consideration when. When thinking about this whole process, the requirements and the timeframe that we've been allotted here.
Yeah, so I guess I'm curious, so thanks Zach and Angela, I recognize this is. Kind of a universal challenge that we're all facing. I think I I voiced my opinion before is, I don't think we have the ability. Or capacity to increase density per unit in the downtown train district. Particularly because of the historic nature of that entire community. That being said, I'm just curious, Ms. Latrell, what is the process by which we can appeal back to the state? Either for an extension as Ms. Braccio Braccio had requested. Or for leniency on the twenty percent capacity of units being in the train station, I think our rationale is strong. I think we have a very strong point, I think the the, I will be very honest with you, I don't think in three town meetings. We will have the people that come to town meeting will approve this law. If we have to increase density and increase beyond forty nine units, which is what our current compliance model had indicated. To go to a hundred and fifty units in a down a half mile downtown district. And I am just not of the mindset that we should kind of proceed forward, I think that we as a. Whether we have a separate working session. Separate from a public, have a public hearing, obviously, but having a discussion on what we want to do. I do not think we should propose what the other recommendations are, because I think we have a mighty hill to battle, and I'm not sure. I'm completely in support of that hill to to fight. So Mimi, my question to you is really, what are our avenues for direct conversation with the state to either ask for extension or to. Ask for leniency on the specific requirements of twenty percent in the downtown district? Not downtown district, this MBTA half mile, thanks.
I'm I'm not sure. I can look into that. I think what's what other towns have done is their select board has really to HLC. To the secretary. Has been denied. But I think. I think the the first thirteen rapid transit towns had an easier lift, a lot of them already had. Multi-family housing zones, they just had to tweak a little, so I think this next round with the more. Smaller suburban towns, the commuter rail towns is. Gonna. Be a lot more difficult. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, Zach, I just wanted to ask a question, you had just said something along the lines of we are close. It seems like we would have to either change the underlying zoning. Within area one. Or really dramatically increase the acreage within that area. To me, please tell me if I'm missing something, because if that's the case, I'm I'm not sure how we would characterize this as being close.
Yeah, I think that's that's. I mean, a good point, Jesse or Mr. Stein, I did want to clarify. For Mrs. Hulahan that. That it doesn't need to necessarily be a density increase. Within that area, there are options on. Again, adjusting the dimensional requirements, I think one of the biggest sticking points we're seeing here is you have a lot of. Lots that are existing lots that are of smaller. Minimum lot areas or or lot areas as it relates to the the underlying zoning. So I guess to answer your question. There would be some adjustments needed to the zoning, I don't think that's as big a mountain as you might think to to climb. I think the biggest challenge here is you have a lot of smaller existing parcels. That, again, the the model has to work with the existing condition, right, so. One way to. To 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 get past that is to to reduce your minimum lot area. From twenty five thousand down to closer to ten thousand square feet. Some some other, you know, potential adjustments. Could be, you know, FAR setbacks, et cetera. But we see that as if if you were able to adjust and the town could live with. Some smaller minimum lot areas. That the area you've identified is not very far off from a compliant area. Within. The the commuter rail station, so. That's what I mean by not very far off, I think. With some open mindedness and and some some adjustments to the dimensional regulations that. We're not, we're not that far off. Mimi, you're on mute, so I think Debbie.
Yes, so Mr. Maria and then I think Mr. Faff. So if you want to bring him.
I I just want to say, I think I think we need to slow down, I I don't think we're close. I think we've done this before where we we tweaked and we added in a parcel, we removed one, we added one. And this isn't that, we all joined this board as elected members. Of our community, because we care about the people in the community. And people have a right to know what's going on on their road. And this affects people's lives. So this isn't just a map, we're just playing around and, you know, thi- this is real life. And I really think that. You know, from day one, we've really tried to listen to the community. We've heard people say, slow down. And I think we do need to slow down and and take a look, I don't think this is a quick fix. I'm not at all interested in taking a look at what you've provided, I I don't think my head can actually even take a look at that tonight. Because I see what I see four stories and I see things like that. And I can't deal with that in this community. I don't think that's fair, we never told anybody in the community that we'd be doing anything like that. So I know and I appreciate that as an engineer, you're looking for solutions, some of these solutions are not going to fit Southborough. And it could be that we can't find solutions, so I think that we have to keep that open mind.
Understood, if if I may, it's just, again, I'm not suggesting that we go quickly here, I think we. We all know we do need to slow down and that's what we. Had discussed today and yesterday, you know, last week, this is, this is all pretty fresh and we've been. As responsive as we've can, as we could be. Ahead of a hearing that came pretty quick and a lot of discussion. With MHP with a number of, you know, with the town. Jumping on town calls, you know, daily now. We, our goal was to try to turn around some quick thoughts and just to show and paint the picture. Of what adjustments could be made by no means suggesting that we scramble to quickly. You know, consider those. But we did want to paint that picture for the planning board members at least. Ahead of the meeting tonight. And again, I think. I'm optimistic over the next month or so with some more working sessions, some. Some collaboration across both the planning board and the town. That we can find some some potential solutions that are are acceptable to most.
Thank you. Mr. Faff, welcome and. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done, really appreciate it.
Andrew Faf fifty oh kill. I just wanted to say, one, I think the push, you know, pushing this out to the fall was was the right call here where we are today, I completely agree with that, so thank you. First, I want to start, Zach, you know, thank you for coming and I appreciate you, you. You know, defending your company, but I mean. We brought this up, I believe, as early as beginning of January is a possible concern that. The model might not be done correctly. And, you know. You know, I I was able to figure it out, I'm a finance guy, I'm not a planner, you know, and and the model is is pretty self evident. That the mistake was there, so I think. You know, what I'd be looking for, if if you were my contractor or my consultant dealing with them every day is, you know. The mistake was made and that I hope that Bowler will sit here and. You know, acknowledge that and and hopefully continue to work with us through the fall, I know we are, we're always worried about. Not having enough meetings with you or or models to be done, but I hope that you will. I see us basically kind of starting over, not in terms of. The mapping sessions or anything like that, but in terms of this compliance model and using the mapping sessions to kind of build it out. I do think, I do agree with Marnie that we're. It's not a tweak, right, I think we're gonna go back to the well and and start to pick parcels, I mean. Of the, I think eleven or twelve parcels that we had selected, only three were compliant. So I think we really need to go, we'll get new parcels, start to get creative. If we're gonna get to the one fifty or if we're gonna push back with the state, but. You know, I think there's some certainly some work that needs to be done and. And, you know, we could get creative in terms of how we do it, I have some ideas that I can share with the board offline, but. I think we can get there eventually, but it's gonna be. I think we can get there eventually, but it's going to be some creativity.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Mimi, I think Colleen's trying to get your attention.
Yes, Colleen.
Hi, and thank you. I'm disappointed of what's going, what they came here with. I think that it's a value for you to at least look at one of the models because what they're tweaking is actually that compliance model. And it will give us all a better understanding of what, what wrong and what we can do to fix it in different ways, not just adding a parcel, not completely changing the, the zoning, the underlying zoning. But I, I think there's a value in that if the board decides to listen to or see a few of their suggestions. That's all.
Yes, Ms. Houlihan.
So thanks, Colleen. I appreciate that. I think that was circulated in an email. I think that Deb's point around, like, to be honest, like, it's mind-numbing right now to be where we're at. And I think we're all like at the point of really to, to see what the tweaks are. Again, Andrew, a- and like kudos to Andrew Faff. Just want to say, like, here's a guy who's not even on this team who spent like guy countless hours modeling, identified the challenges, raised them to the planning board and provided some other areas. I think the planning board needs to look at what Andrew provided. We had conversations. Karina and I had an opportunity to go meet with Mr. Bob Heavy and check out his land. So I think we should really sit down and have a separate meeting reviewing everything that we have in front of us because I do think that the rules of the game change from when we were mapping. And I just think we need to reevaluate as a, as a board and I'm just, I'm not prepared to do that this evening. So my recommendation is that we close the public hearing and try to on our own offline and email review the, the Bowler recommendations that came across and have an opinion and prepare that for Monday's follow-on public hearing. Thank you, Mimi.
You have another one online that would like to talk? Ben Cohen?
Sure. First, Mr. Stein.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a point of clarification. I'm not disagreeing with you, Marty, but I think what we would do is continue the public hearing and not close it. That's all. Thanks.
Point taken. Mr. Cohen?
Hi.
If you could just introduce yourself and your address, please.
Ben Cohen, can you hear me?
Yep.
Please shut the door. Two Harris Drive. I just wanted to say that first I wanted to, if I may, provide a little clarity for myself and possibly other folks who are listening. It sounds like the goal we set for ourselves was ten acres. And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, that relied on those ten acres being able to accommodate a density of fifteen units per acre for a total of one hundred and fifty units. It sounds like what happened was we identified the ten acres. But following all the other underlying rules of those ten acres and their inherent zonings, we can't achieve anywhere near that density. So I understand that's frustrating. Speaking as a member of the public, I am very much looking forward to seeing many different models that would comply. We, I think we've been whittling away at a single perfect zone and then we're very disappointed that it isn't good. I, I, I feel like we should have had a lot of different ways to attack this the whole time, ways that included more acreage, changes to the zoning. And maybe that's what the, the firm is here to present all these different tweaks. And just so speaking as a member of the public, I would very much like to see all the different ways we could achieve, even if none of them are ideal or what we want. I would like to see the options. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Desmond?
Go ahead, Mr. Desmond. If you could introduce yourself and give your address, please.
Yes, Paul Desmond, five Pinecone Lane. Also a member of Shopsey, which might be relevant here. So I just had a couple of questions. First, you know, I've attended a couple of these sessions. I was at one of the working groups. And I'm just unclear on a couple of things.
You just muted yourself, Mr. Desmond.
All right. Are the units at Madison Place that are already there included in your calculations?
Yes. Well, they're not, the units aren't included. The, the parcel is in the unit capacity is.
So existing units that, you know, people are already living in are not included in, in the capacity that we're trying to achieve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then what about the property where Fitzgerald Store is right now? Was that, is that included in the, the ten acres that have to be near the train station?
The store itself is not. It's a nineteen, built in nineteen hundred village store. It was a factory store.
So that's part of the historical.
It's a historic property.
Okay, and, all right. And then the, the, the zone near thirty-four St. Martin's, St. Martin. I mean, at, at the last meeting, there was a gentleman who was saying it's, you know, nothing's ever going to be able to get built there because it, it fronts in Marlboro and they're never going to agree to it. I mean, can you shed any light on that?
It does, but Marlboro, whether there, I can't shed any light that it'll never be built on. There are many multifamily housing developments around there. Yes, Ms. Houlihan.
Mr. Desmond, just to make a comment that the specific, the specificity of the challenge with the compliance model right now is the half-mile acreage at the train station. That needed to comply and provide one hundred and fifty units. The compliance model indicated it provided forty-nine units with its existing underlying zoning. We have to find a hundred more units in a half-mile period. End of story. St. Martin and the Madison Place, Madison Place property actually brings us over our highest level of unit capacity. I think it was a twenty-three unit per capacity. So it actually brought us over the average. So that actually supports our Jenga model, if you will, because this is a Jenga game. It's like what you play and what you wiggle. So for our perspective, St. Martin and the Madison Place seem to be okay. It's the half-mile within the MBTA. That's the major point of contention right now because it's, and, and it's alarming factor for the board sitting here today. So I just wanted to be very clear on that specific indication of the compliance and where we're falling out of compliance.
And just one more clarification on that, Marty. Thank you for clarifying, but we're at fit, we were at forty-nine percent. So it was actually, we were closer to seventy-four units. And Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, but seventy-four out of the one fifty was what we were providing. So we're about seventy-five units short.
Oh, so we're fifty percent sure. Okay, so that's actually an upside. So I thought we were at only a forty-nine units per, for the capacity.
Yeah, that was the percentage. So thus the confusion.
Sorry to interrupt you, Paul. I just wanted to be very clear about where we are, we are worried as a planning board, or at least I am worried as a planning board member.
That, that frustration is coming through loud and clear. So no problem there. But no, I guess where I was going was just, I, I just want to make sure that we're sort of complying with the spirit of the law. You know, again, as a member of Shopsey, I'm very interested in getting more affordable housing in, in town. And some of the questions that had come up the last meeting were a little troubling or I, I'm just glad to hear that, you know, to you straighten that out, like the Madison Place issue. Would have been a problem if you were trying to include houses that was already there, which didn't make sense to me. I'm glad you cleared that up. But again, I, I just wanted, I, I advocating that we do whatever we can to address the spirit of this law. And I think that would put us in good stead with the state. If, you know, if I, I share your concern about, you know, getting those hundred fifty units near the train station. You know, if we can show we're making a, a good faith effort there as well as in other areas, I think you'd be in much better stead to, to maybe get some sort of waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're certainly trying to comply with the spirit of the law, but just to be clear, it's not an affordable housing law. The, the allowance to have a minimum of ten percent affordable housing was added at one of the later guidelines. So it was not adopted to create affordable housing.
Robert Warden would like to say something? Where, where do you go?
Hey, hi there. Sorry, I was muted. My name's Robert Warden. I'm a resident at twenty-seven Atwood Street. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just had a question about the semantics of our interpretation of the MBTA guidance. The half-mile radius, does that take into consideration that the train station's on the border of the town and is there any percentage taken away from that, given that a majority of that radius around the MBTA facility is in Hopkinton?
I think at later, later guidance did take that into consideration. Originally, the fifty acres had to be within a half-mile of the train station. So that after a lot of input from several municipalities, the state updated their guidelines and now we only need to have ten acres within a half-mile, but it has to have a one hundred and fifty unit capacity within that ten acres, which is the issue that we're having.
Got it. And that takes into consideration the fact that the train station's on the border of the town?
Yes.
And is a half-mile measured from the entrance of the station or any of the outermost dimensions of the parking yard?
From the lot, it's not clear.
From the lot. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Angela, did you have something to say? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna answer Robert's question that that twenty percent is based on the developable area within the station area. So for Southborough, it was twenty percent, but for other municipalities that have more developable area in that half-mile, it gets higher and higher based on that.
Got it. Okay. So it was already re-proportioned based on that. Okay. Thank you.
And that was, that was from the state.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
David Perry would like to make a comment?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, David Perry. Twenty Main Street, Southborough. And I must, I just have to say, I mean, this is the most incredibly confusing meeting. And quite a surprise. I mean, I think it's, I think actually you're doing exactly the right thing. We're just to back off and slow down. But boy, is it confusing, you know, and I'm a technical city planner and I can't really understand what the heck's gone wrong. So if I can't understand that, how the heck anyone, any normal person will understand what's going on with this model and all this stuff is just incredibly confusing. I mean, not even your board members obviously understand what's going on. So obviously, there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, it's not necessarily your fault. It's maybe it's the state's fault with inaccurate models or inaccurate explanations or clarity at how you're supposed to do this. And by the way, I do, I do support Marty Houlihan's mention about, you know, this is, it's, it's a, it's a small, single-family historic area. It's just not appropriate to high-density multifamily housing. I think that statement needs to be made to MBTA. I, I don't know if there's any other area in, in the state and the region which is like our area, but oh my God. I just think it's just so inappropriate. I mean, there are some lots where it wouldn't be inappropriate. The one, the other side of the road from the station. You know, South Aurora, that, that site is appropriate, but some of those sites north of north of the railroad line are just simply inappropriate. I think it damages a historic area and I think that has some value. It needs to be, need to make a case for the state, argue that issue with the state. Don't just take everything as a sort of done deal. I mean, push back on it. After all, they're just bureaucrats. They just made up these rules sitting in a room somewhere three years ago. Anybody, what I'd like, what I'd like, I want to suggest one other thing. I just have a gigantic problem with with your site three, which I think you're calling Site Three, Madison Place. I was reading the guidelines over the weekend. The guidelines make perfectly clear. You're supposed to be either build new, you know, build entirely new at the required density fifteen units acres, or you need to replace it. Now, I, when Madison Place is an existing relatively new multifamily housing project, it is actually, isn't it, an example of what the state wants? So what, what is going on here? I mean, no developer's going to come here and tear down Madison Place and build it at double the density, are they? Because you need to add units. The point is you're supposed to add units, multifamily units. You're supposed to, you know, it has to be, you can't, you can't add anything to what's already there because it's already, it's already built out. It's impossible to add. The only thing you can do is tear the whole bloody thing down and build it like five stories instead of three. And that's illegal. You can't do that because it violates all kinds of rules. So it seems, I just don't understand how Madison Place can possibly be a valid site. It just doesn't make any sense whatsoever. What was them, if the Madison Place site was vacant, okay, then you could build a hell of a new unit. Or B, if Madison Place was a low-density project, one story, and you could build it up to three, that wouldn't make sense, but it is already at three stories. So it cannot be added to. Anyway, so I, I just think that site should be withdrawn and you need to find something else. Just my suggestion. Thank you. I mean, you're doing a lot of work and obviously what's happened here is not your fault. It's the fault of these state guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Colleen?
I don't see any other hands. Oh, yes, I do. Mr. Bartolini. Let's see. Where do you go? Jack, you there?
Hi, Jack. If you could introduce yourself and give your address, please.
John Bartolini, Jr., Four Wire Circle. This is very difficult. I, I, I I don't think I've ever been, and I've been to a lot of them. I don't think I've ever been to a public hearing where all of a sudden the planning board says, no, we've got to, we've got to stop. And I do know that you've put a lot of time and effort in this, but what I'm hearing is that you might redo the maps. And if you do that, my parcel on Route Nine was a backup of eleven point zero three acres. And I'd like that to be reconsidered when you do that. It would, I think that I, I could do a nice project for the town there. Now, secondly, I think if I understand this right, it's getting confusing. Forty-nine units, one hundred fifty units, forty-nine percent and a hundred percent. And I think what it really comes down to is that you've got a zoning, and I was going to ask this last week. You're twenty-five thousand square foot zoning, but everything in that area is pre-existing non-conforming. So when you go to your compliance, you're looking at twenty-five thousand square foot lots. But in fact, the lots down there are anywhere from five thousand to maybe fifteen thousand feet. And I think that's part of the problem and nobody picked up on it. Bowler says it's not the state. It sounds like everybody's frustrated and came out at the very last minute. But, so I can understand a little bit of this, but I, I don't really understand the whole thing. So anyway, if we're going to redo maps, I would like to have somebody look at my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
No other hand showing.
Colleen, can we just mute or, or degrade, not degrade, but deploy the people who have been, yeah, demote. Thanks.
There you go. Thanks. So it, does the board, having heard comments, see any value in seeing what the proposed options are at the station or do we still want to take a minute and recalibrate?
So I'm likely in the minority. I
So I'm likely in the minority. I I would like to hear what the consultant, um, has to present to us tonight. Um, I certainly understand, though, the idea that, uh, we, you know, are not, I mean, I I particularly have, you know, a very high concerns about the, the, the concept. I don't think that, um, I'm on the same page as the consultant, for sure. In the, in this notion that, you know, all we need is an open mind. When we're talking about changing underlying zoning, that's a huge, uh, challenge. And and not one that I'm sure I'm, I'm behind, um, I'm going to get behind. So, um, at the same time, just for, you know, the sake of getting us on path to next steps, it would make sense to me to hear what, uh, they have to say. Thanks.
Anyone else? I think I've been, uh, swayed from hearing from uh, some of the neighbors that they would like to see what the, uh, proposals are. So is there an objection to, uh? So Jesse and I are a yes and we have three nos?
All right, I'll go with the consensus. I'm not going to, this is not worth, uh, battling my fellow members over.
I I guess, I guess my whole point is, I I'm kind of at the point where, yes, we can see the the presentation. But the point is, there, there probably is underlying zoning. Like, there's a whole lot of things that we have not even been able to see as a planning board or even individually. So opening that up to the public presentation just makes me nervous. And it's not that I'm trying to be not candid or transparent with the public, but I haven't seen it first. And I represent the, the, I'm an elected official representing the public on the planning board. It just doesn't make me a hundred percent comfortable doing that. So I, I'm not in the opinion that we should present this right now.
Okay. Good point, Marty. So do we have anything else to discuss?
Well, we're going to continue the public hearing, but what are the next steps, I guess, is what? So we're not going to hear with the consultant now. What are we going to be doing, you know, between now and Monday, the eleventh?
Um, I think we each need to study what was proposed by the consultant and look at the maps ourselves and see if we can find a path forward. And then, and I'll look into, um, what needs to be done to, to um, contact the state to plead for an exemption or a reduction or something.
Okay, um, it doesn't seem like there's any other hands raised. So I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing for MBTA communities to Monday, March eleventh at, um, what's the time, Karina?
Um, I'm sorry, seven, seven fifteen.
Oh, thank you, Colleen. Seven, seven fifteen P M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Rasio, yes.
And, uh, thank you, Zach and Angela. This was a, a difficult meeting and, but I thank you both for being here.
Yeah, I understand. And thank you again to, you know, the planning board and and all the town staff for continuing to work with us. As, you know, we try to find a, a, a path to compliance here for the town. So thank you all for your, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good week, everyone.
Oh.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Second.
I still have COVID brain. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Me, Demuria, yes.
Rasio, yes.
So now, thank you, everyone. Have a good week.
Thanks all. Good night.
Good night.